Thank you. Too much demand.
I'd be so glad to see you guys.
Good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, May 4th, and this is Moscow City Council regular meeting. And I'm honored tonight to introduce Boy Scout Troop 344 from here in Moscow. Scoutmaster Alex Gregg and Assistant Master Shelley Hanks is with us, as well as the troop. And we're going to ask Matthew Goodson to please lead us in the pledge, so if everybody will stand up. Matthew, whenever you're ready. Here's a flag right here, son.
Okay. Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Matthew. Alex, would you like to get up and address the council, as well as the audience out here, please?
So, Mayor and Council, thank you for allowing us to come and host our visit tonight. Our scouts are starting a program for citizenship in the community, and so as a matter of that merit badge, there's a series of requirements. One is to attend this. Later is to identify an issue of importance to the community and to talk with likely one of you about that, or someone else in our city government, to get a better understanding of it, so that they can, in the future, learn to be good citizens and contribute to our community.
Alex, many, many years ago, I was a Boy Scout. I was Cub Scout first, and then a Boy Scout for a number of years. So, it really does my heart good to see a bunch of Boy Scouts out here and earning their merit badges and serving the community as well. I was learning how to be good citizens. It's a big deal for all of us here in Moscow, so I'm very proud of the group for being here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
And thank you, troop. Okay, with that, I'm going to move on to some proclamations I am going to read. The first one will be Public Service Recognition Week. A Public Service Recognition Week proclamation, whereas Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels, these unsung heroes do the work to keep our nation working, and whereas public employees take not only jobs, but oath, and whereas public employees in the city of Moscow are committed to professional excellence and customer service, and whereas many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, border patrol officers, embassy employees, healthcare professionals, and others, risk their lives each day in service to the people of the United States and around the world, and whereas public servants include teachers, doctors, scientists, train conductors, astronauts, nurses, safety inspectors, laborers, computer technicians, social workers, and countless other occupations, day in and day out. They provide the diverse services demanded by the American people, their government, with efficiency and integrity. Whereas, without these public servants, at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. And whereas, the city of Moscow recognizes the generous contributions, the time and talent by public employees and community volunteers, and the importance of service that they render. Now, therefore, I bill lamer at the mayor of the city of Moscow, do hereby proclaim May 3rd through the 9th, 2015, as Public Service Recognition Week. In the city, and I encourage all citizens to acknowledge the accomplishments and contributions of public employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and city. With that, Gary, would you like to see this for our employees?
Here's your chance to photobomb.
My second proclamation is the Bike Month proclamation. Whereas bicycling has been an affordable, environmentally sound mode of transportation, an excellent form of exercise and recreation since the first pedal-propelled bicycle appeared in the 1860s, and whereas 77 percent of the communities in China bicycle to work, compared to 50 percent in the Netherlands, 15 percent in Japan, and just 1.6 percent in the United States, and whereas 6 percent of the Moscow residents choose bicycles for their longest commutes, and many more adults here use bicycles for at least part of their commuting, and whereas local government is committed to educating motorists and cyclists about safe vehicle operation to reduce accidents, injuries, and fatalities, and whereas bicycling contributes to retail sales, tourism dollars, and planning, infrastructure, and policies that support community livability, and whereas bicycling reduces heart disease, obesity, diabetes, and hypertension, and improves mental health and cardiovascular fitness, and whereas Moscow supports the objectives of let's move, safer routes to school, complete streets, filler racks, the officer-able kids' safety fair, and more, and whereas Moscow's Bike for Life Committee, with representations from the healthcare, government, education, families, businesses, and environmental interests, has coordinated a variety of very cool cycling activities around Moscow this spring, and listed them on Bike for Life's website. And whereas our region is getting favorable recognition for bicycle-friendly accommodations, including Moscow's new intermodal transit center, more convenient and functional bike racks, and a growing network of bicycle pedestrian trails, and whereas National Bike Month began in May of 1956, now, therefore, I bill lamer at the mayor of the city of Moscow, do hereby proclaim May 2015 to be Bike Month. In Moscow, and I urge everyone who can cycle to work, school, shopping, and errands, or just simply for pleasure, to improve health and the fine refreshment and invigoration to lessen adverse impacts on climate and to reduce transportation costs. And with that, I know we have a group of bicyclers here. I know Margaret Dibble's here, as well as Karen and others, so please come up, and we'll present this to the group.
Well, I'll be right in the middle of the morning, so we all over.
Oh, yeah.
Wheeze in here. We're going to be able to get a bit of energy, but.
Smile.
I know. Really, no.
I have handed out to all the city council, partial schedule of our Bike Month activities. And we have a website, Bike for Life Moscow, where you can see more of them, and of course, we have a Facebook page, so I hope you will look up some of those. I'm sorry I didn't have flyers for all of you, but I hope to see you out on your bicycle this month and all the following months. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Gary, a city supervisor, and you received the employee recognition for workers. Is there anything you'd like to address to the group?
Thought I'd say a few words during our employee recognition segment, if that's okay.
Okay, that'll be fine. That's coming up. Thank you all. Okay, we'll move on now. Item number one, which is the consent agenda.
Your honor, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second. Okay, we got a motion by Dan and a second by John to approve the consent agenda as is, and I will start. Walter, I'll go with you, even though you've been gone.
Aye.
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 Okay, and we will move on to the next thing. And this is the staff recognition report by Gary Reener. Gary, you have the podium, sir.
Thank you, your honor. I would like to say a few words about Public Service Recognition Week. Comes around once a year. It's a great time to look at the people who actually do the public service in the city. Don't mean to exclude, by any means, our volunteer boards and commissions, who do an excellent job for the city, and certainly, they need to be recognized, as well as our city employees. Over 140 people work for the city of Moscow, and as we like to say, the invisible government typically is the best government. When the streets are plowed, you know, people aren't committing crimes, the sewers work, lawns are mowed, that sort of thing, bills go out regularly, water comes out of the tap clean. Those are the things that happen every day, and it's usually because of the work of some city employees. So, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank all the people who give the better part of every working week to the citizens of the city of Moscow, and I'd like to ask for a round of applause for them, if I could. Thank you. With that, oh, and by the way, we do have, Friday, a week ago, I think you saw that there were some city employees downtown doing the citywide cleanup, downtown cleanup, getting ready for graduation, and the opening of farmer's market, and that sort of thing. And that's a fun thing that we do every year. We take a Friday morning and go out and sweep the downtown and pick up stuff, and that's very nice. We didn't have as many volunteers as we usually have, so I don't know if the weather was a little bit cooler than usual, but at any rate, that was a good time. And this week, we'll have several different award ceremonies for our city employees. Our Champs Award, citing higher achievement by Moscow public servants, I think is the acronym. So, we'll be having award ceremony for that. Service awards for those who serve the city in increments of five years. So, I look forward to that, and you should have got an invitation. If not, it will be forthcoming.
Gary, before you move on, I want to make a comment on that city cleanup day. That was April 24th, and I was downtown at 4:45 in the morning, and people might say, why were you down there? What were you doing downtown? Well, I got to share with you, and I told Tyler Palmer, who is our street superintendent, that's how I call Tyler, there was four or five of our employees down there, two trucks, leaf blowers, as well as the leaf picker-upper, the machine, the sweeper itself, and they were doing an outstanding job. I just stood back and watched them for like 10 or 15 minutes, and one of my favorite things to do. I had no idea I was there, but I pointed it out to Tyler to tell those guys, guys and gals, I mean, and women out there, too, that I was very, very appreciative. So, that was a very early morning start to that city cleaning project. They did an outstanding job, so.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that. With that, I have a couple of staff recognition situations I'd like to report on tonight. The first is on behalf of the Idaho Victim Assistance Academy honoring Corporal Casey Green. I'd like to read his letter to Chief Duke. On behalf of the Idaho Victim Assistance Academy, we'd like to recognize the outstanding contributions of Corporal Casey Green to the 2014 Idaho Victim Assistance Advanced Academy. Corporal Green was voted by his peers at the academy as the 2014 recipient of the Student Leadership Award in recognition of his outstanding contributions to the academy through his leadership and input into class discussions and activities. The IVAA Advanced Academy convenes 25 of Idaho's outstanding leaders in crime victim services to learn and lead together to better meet the needs of crime victims. As the recipient of the 2014 Student Leadership Award, Corporal Green was recognized as a student who most significantly contributed to the vision and mission of the academy, as recognized by his peers. The IVAA continues to benefit from Corporal Green's leadership through his contributions to the executive committee. His dedication to crime victim issues and his passion and commitment to justice are commendable. Moscow Police Department should be proud to have such an outstanding individual in your department. We appreciate the time and commitment of Corporal Green and the support and cooperation of the Moscow Police Department in continuing work on behalf of Idaho's crime victims. Sincerely, Jennifer Landhus, Director of Social Change, Idaho Victims Assistance Academy.
Very nice.
So, congratulations to Corporal Green. I think he's here, but Chief Duke is. Okay, secondly, I'm on behalf of the Rocky Mountain Chapter of the American Public Works Association. I'd like to recognize Tyler Palmer for receiving the Management Innovation Award. It was presented by the APWA Rocky Mountain Chapter, which is Idaho, Montana, and Wyoming, and it's the only individual award given each year in the region. The other two awards go to specific projects. The award was given primarily for the creation of the Inland Northwest Streets Maintenance Co-op. The co-op currently has 52 members representing 25 entities, and has resulted in cost savings for many of the participating agencies. Through it, we have facilitated cooperation on projects, sharing of specifications, sharing of information on projects, programs, and techniques that have been found to be successful in our region. So, I have a plaque, and Rod, if I could get you to take a photo of that as well, and I think Tyler is here?
Yeah.
And Les, if you could come forward as well? I do want to make mention, want to recognize Tyler for the innovation, and that of the Public Works Department, and Les for giving him the opportunity to make those strides. So, with that, well.
Got a photograph?
Tyler.
Yeah, why don't you go in the middle?
Hold on a second, Gary.
He's going to put them off.
Yeah, it could be cool.
Put them off, or put them off. I never said something cool.
Gary certainly hit on the main thing that I'd like to mention is, really, this award, it's an individual award that's given out, but it's not something that happens because of an individual. It takes an environment of innovation that really has been fostered and facilitated by our administration the whole way down, you know, from Gary on down, including our elected officials, that encourage us to innovate and try new things. And, you know, it takes time to create this sort of thing. One of the beauties of a place like Moscow is our relative geographic isolation, but that also leads to unique challenges. And so, it's encouraging to work in a place where we're encouraged to meet those challenges and to be creative in the way that we do it. But, two people that really made it so this could happen, Gary mentioned Les, Les McDonald, our Public Works Director. He encourages us to look for creative ways to do things and really supports us as we do those things. And also, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Tammy Gray, our administrative assistant that works in the street and fleet divisions of our department. She really is the backbone of the program. She tirelessly sends out agendas and emails and reminders and makes phone calls, and, you know, wrangling this many different entities can be an interesting challenge, and without her, it doesn't happen. And so, she really deserves more of the recognition than I think probably anybody does, but really appreciate being able to work here, and it's been a great experience. Thank you.
Well, Tyler, thank you for your leadership on that, too. So, pat yourself a little bit on the back, Kay, because you've done a good job for us. So, thank you. Let's give him a round of applause.
Thank you, Les.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to item number three, which is Public Comment, Mayor's Response Time. Members of the public can speak before the council on matters that are not on today's agenda or not currently pending before planning and zoning or the Board of Adjustments. So, if there's somebody that'd like to comment, please come up, state your name, address, and what's on your mind.
I'm not sure if this is the right time, but I'll.
Come on up and address your name, sir, and address.
Yeah, my name's Bruce Panckery, and it's in relation to article about tennis courts and reservicing down by West Park Elementary. Is that on the agenda tonight?
Yes, it is. It's on the agenda we're going to be talking about. I believe it's item number eight.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, it's item number eight. Okay. With that, we will move on. We'll go with item number five, or four, which is Citizen Commission Report. Brian, Nickerson, I almost went right over you, Brian, so if you're the Moscow Volunteer Fire Department. Chief Nickerson, you have the podium, sir.
Counsel, mayor. I think we have to have a PowerPoint yet. Turn on here.
Bottom left. Michael helping.
Any instructions?
There we go.
Appreciate it. I'd like to echo you what Tyler says. You know, it's an honor and a privilege to work here. I was talking to the mayor today, and talked to Gary a week or two ago, and I tell you, been here seven months, and I wouldn't change a thing about being here in this community. It's really welcomed me and stuff, and the great group of people that we have, the volunteers that we have, and so forth, and seeing the Boy Scouts here even is a win. It's great for the community. It's great for everybody. Just a few slides we'll go over from last year, 2014. Of course, I came in late August, so this will kind of cover the whole year, I hope. Maybe not. There we go. I will see that one. Volunteer, the MVFD membership continues to provide manpower at the response levels matched by very few. And what that basically means is, nobody in the state of Idaho, or probably across the country, can match what we do for the number of calls we do and the type of calls we run. As you can see down here, the membership averages about 101 members throughout the whole year. A lot of those folks, probably 30 to 40 of them possibly, go back and forth between being an EMT on the ambulance and also on one of the fire companies. So, they wear dual hats, or dual roles, to provide service, and that's one of the benefits we have, is the cross-training of a lot of folks. In 2014, we ran 1,763 calls on the EMS side. Now, that's patient contacts. That's, for example, if we run a motor vehicle accident, and we have five patients, that's five individual contacts. Typically, it's one person, but on average, we run over 1,700. The fire side of the house, which includes the city and the rural, which is 1,068, and this year, the rural will actually take out about 150 of those. The rest of those are the city. So, it's easier to group them together, and you'll see why here in a minute. As most of you know, the Volunteer Fire Department is a corporation, non-for-profit. It is operated and functions on a 10-member board, which I serve as the president/CEO of the Board of Directors, non-voting, other than in the event of a tie or otherwise. Station 1 is owned and maintained and operated by the volunteers. Now, obviously, the city does house city equipment in Station 1. Station 2 is jointly owned by the city and the volunteer corporation, and Station 3 is solely owned by the city. Three bays in Station 3 are leased by the rural for three rural trucks. The rural fire district also owns a building at or near, right next to Station 2 over on White Avenue. Volunteers provide the community with a significant savings of tax dollars for fire suppression each year. The savings that we get, and I really don't like throwing out numbers, but I can assure you that it's a significant amount of dollars that the city actually saves by the service that we provide with the volunteers that we have. There's a lot of organizations around the country that'd be very envious to have 101 members in a lot of different aspects. Probably a lot of civic organizations that would love to have 50 members of anything. So, the Volunteer Fire Department contracts with the city for the manpower, and then the city provides the management and owns the fire apparatus and equipment, and that's a majority of them. However, the ambulance company of the corporation actually operates 100 percent on their own and is self-sustaining, which means that they buy their own equipment, they replace their own vehicles. Everything is owned by the corporation and the ambulance company. As it says down there, they own four ambulances right now. One of them is actually currently finishing up, if I'm not mistaken, that is going to be remounted this year, I think before winter. Is that correct, Dan? I believe. So, hopefully, before football season comes around, because I believe it's going to have the theme of the Moscow Bears this time. So, we have a vandal. That's an ambulance, so now we're going to have a bear. The rural fire district owns and maintains its own equipment for the rural, however, the members are shared. And what that means is, is we have 100 volunteers. We share members of the volunteer corporation with the rural fire district. And basically, the folks just have to apply, and they get accepted, and there's extra training for that, meaning for wildland and rural operations, because the operations are a little bit different outside the city, meaning that water supply and some of the strategies and tactics are different in the rural versus in the city. Student resident program started in 1948. It's maintained as an expense of the volunteers, a volunteer resident firefighter program. There's 24 right now that's currently here. Two of them are graduating this year, so we'll have very little turnover for this next school year. That's actually the current, that picture's currently, the current members. They run both fire and EMS calls, mostly on the engine. However, several of the folks now, several of the resident folks, are actually members of the ambulance company, so they actually respond in an ambulance, depending on if there's another one out or how busy it is. The program provides the community with staffing on the evenings and the weekends during the school year, as well as, since I've been here this year, significantly during the day when they don't have class and other things and studying going on, they'll actually, three or four of them will jump on an engine and go to a call, just like earlier today. So, it's not uncommon to do that. Response times, this is one of the things that we're working on. That's why you're not going to really see a number of what our response times are. You'll see on the next page that we changed our records management system January 1. So, we're working through some challenges and some struggles of how we're tracking and how we're changing some things. But this is, I just wanted to show you the standard that's out there today. This is not necessarily a requirement, however, it's a national standard that is out there based for volunteer fire departments, organization deployment of fire suppression operations. You can see here in the demographics that the population for Moscow per square mile is 3,989, based on the city data that I found on citydata.com. And basically, we fall within the urban, so at least according to this, our minimum staffing should be 15, or response time minutes should be nine, and we should meet that objective 90 percent of the time. And basically, what that means is, that means when we get there, we should have about 15 people. And I can tell you from, I think, the fire out in Viola a little over a week ago, I believe they had every bit of 15, if not 20 to 22 people out there. So, again, that's an extended response time, but just that is an example of recent history. So, we're going to look at how we mold and fit this into our model and see what we can do to achieve or get close to some of the standards that are out there. We're never going to meet all the standards, however, it's something to strive for. And that's kind of the way I look at a lot of the standards, is hey, this is where we're going, and this may be how we can get there and find where we can make improvements. Again, changing the records management system. We implemented it in January 1. Again, it's met some challenges, just because it's new, it's a change. However, we're going to capture different data. We're going to actually specifically capture dispatch time, turnout time, which means from the time that the tone goes off and when they get done speaking, means that once that wheel turns on that engine, or that truck, or that ambulance, that's when the time starts, and that's our turn, or stops. That's our turnout time. Response time is the time that it takes from the time that wheel turns to the time that we get to the fire or to the scene, wherever that may be. And we're going to track each of that individually by unit, turnout time and response time, so each engine will have a turnout time, each engine will have a response time, because different variations of when people respond and how many respond. So, we'll be tracking units responding, personnel responding, and then the total time, which, if you go back to the other slide, the nine minutes, that would be the total time if we use this, which, like I said, we're not there, we're not even close to being there, but like I said, it's a goal, and we're going to see where we're at, and then we're going to see how we can, see what we can do. Track our incident types a little better than what we have, and also, for safety reasons, track exposures. Who's been on what fires? And that's all data down the road 10, 15, 20 years from now, if somebody gets cancer and so forth. And we're going to be looking at some other things down the road to, that we actually see at a show that we went to here a week ago, maybe to even track that even on a higher level, because we want to be able to protect our people and make sure we're getting them the help or the help they need if they need us. To be an EMT basic, I'm in state Idaho, it requires at least 110 hours of training. I think we do more than that. To be internationally fire service accredited for a Fire 1 and Fire 2 program, which we just finished up, I want to thank the mayor and Gary for coming out to speak at the graduation. It means a lot. I know it meant a lot to the guys and gals. We did over 240 hours of training, stuff between January 13th and April 9th. So, two nights a week, four weekends. So two nights a week, four weekends, was a long three months, but we achieved a lot, and the guys and gals did a great job. We also conduct thousands of hours each year, and last year, we did over 9,000 hours collectively between all members, all 100, over 9,000 hours if we added them all up. So we have the training, we have the ability to achieve a lot, and we have achieved a lot. But we're going to continue to provide, you know, some continuing education when we can, training new recruits, and just offer as many courses and classes as we can. Projects. Upgrade to Station 1's emergency generator, just like I think you guys talked about at the last council meeting. Install apparatus exhaust removal system for safety. We're going to look at that for Station 1 with the volunteers, either a fan system or a polyvent type system. We did purchase what's called an event calendar and sign up, and basically, that'll allow our folks to be able to sign up for like the U of I football games, the basketball games, the Bears football games. Heck, there's multitude of events that go on every weekend almost, that we go to polo or rugby, I think, lacrosse. We have people stand by for all those. I want to thank Gary too for doing retreats with us, for the board and the command staff. Kind of helps us move forward and how we're going to address some things going forward. So, and that's a big deal, I'm glad we're doing that. Hopefully, down the road, we're going to update some policies, procedures, and guidelines and so forth as we go forward. We're going to extend more classes offerings. One of the goals is, one of my goals is, maybe in the next year, is to offer in-house an associate's degree for all the fire courses through LCSC or Eastern Idaho, to be able to offer those classes for our folks, so they'll actually be able to get dual degrees while they're going to University of Idaho. Also certification courses, the Fire 1, Fire 2 program is one, instructor, all those type of courses that a lot of folks want to take. This is just some of the community outreach that we do, high school graduation, sober graduation, Gritman Medical Center. You see us out a lot, and this is why. I can't thank Joe enough for the time he spends on putting a lot of this stuff together with all the volunteers that want to come out and work together to do it. As you know, October's Fire Prevention Month, actually, there's Fire Prevention Week, which is the first full week of October, but we celebrate it the entire month, just because we have a lot of kids to get to in the schools, and it just takes that much time to do it. So hopefully, this coming year, we can, I can work with Gary to get a proclamation for Fire Prevention Month that we can do come late September. I guess, like I said earlier, the standbys that we do, high school career days, we do station tours on a regular basis. We work with a lot of different agencies. I just had a request today for Gritman for a fire truck ride, a donation that is going to be auctioned off, which we do a lot of those. So it's kind of fun to see the guys, and a lot of folks want to do it. So that's a picture of our extrication class just this year. With that, if you have any questions.
Well, Chief, Nickerson, I want to make a comment on, a week ago yesterday, we had the graduation, and you presented 18 firefighters with firefighter 1 and firefighter 2, and it was Class 1, and I was there, of course, as well as Gary. Dan was there too, in his fire role, not necessarily your council role, but it was, to me, one of the things I spoke about was safety and training. It's been a big thing with me all along, and so I'm very tickled to see that happen, and I think you guys are doing a terrific job with that. Dan, you on a comment at all?
Oh, Chief knows how I feel.
Other councils, were you any questions for the chief? Walter.
Mayor, Chief, as council liaison of the fire department last year and this year, I continually am amazed at what the volunteers do, and they do it because they want to do it. They don't do it for pay, they do it because they want to do it. And like I say, they had a little grass fire that was near some buildings over the weekend, and one of those trucks with the resident firefighters was almost there before the on-duty chief was. So they jump on it, they're excited, they want to do a good job, try to protect the community, and it's really amazing. When you get a structure fire call, there's nobody around here that can turn out 40 bodies to work that like we can, and with the equipment that we've got. So congratulations to you and to all your people. I made a comment to the chief earlier, that at that grass fire call, I saw something that I almost wish I'd taken a picture of. It was a firefighter in a pair of turnouts with a blue t-shirt, and I thought the ponytail coming down from the hair above was just really neat. So, you know, you've got male and female out there, and they're both really hard workers, and congratulations.
Thank you again, Chief.
Good job.
Good job.
Very good job.
Okay, we will move on to item number five, which is a public hearing on amendment of Title 4, Chapter 3, Chapter 11, Chapter 12 of the Moscow City Code regarding temporary uses. Mike Ray will present. Mike, you have the podium.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council. Before you tonight, we have a zoning code amendment regarding temporary uses within the city. And just to give you a little bit of background, throughout the year, we have various temporary sales display stands. Most jurisdictions call them temporary uses. Christmas tree stands, fireworks stands, sunglass stands, produce stands, art stands are all really examples of these types of temporary sales display stands throughout the city. Currently, we have an issue in that temporary uses are not defined within the zoning code, so based upon the exclusionary nature of the zoning code, if a use is not specifically listed, that means that it's prohibited, so we have a conflict there. Typically, what we've said before is that when you have these temporary uses that pop up, that as long as they're in a zoning district which would allow that type of retail use, then they would generally be allowed to exist. We had two issues within the past year with temporary uses. First, we had a fireworks stand, which was located mainly in a residential zoning district, which was an issue because that type of commercial retail use would not be allowed in a residential zone. It was on an undeveloped lot, and it was located in close proximity to a busy intersection that caused a safety traffic issue. We also had parking access, which was problematic to the site because of the location and proximity to that intersection. Also had a produce stand located near the South Cuplet, and it was on an undeveloped lot, and that was also located in close proximity to a busy intersection. The access points were really undefined, there was a couple of highway approaches there. People were entering on the northerly approach and going all the way across the property, which had created a tendency for dust or mud generated from those cars' activity on the property. Also had poor circulation within the site, parking wasn't clearly delineated, and they were going across the property in order to get to the stand. So we had reported this to administrative committee on December 8th of last year, and admin committee had directed staff to take a look at possibly including temporary uses within the code and work with Planning and Zoning Commission on that. And we had looked at some other jurisdictions and how they permit temporary uses. We had looked at Boise, Post Falls, Spokane Valley, Washington, Eugene, Oregon, La Grande, Oregon. Most require temporary use permits to review things like vision triangles, and these are primarily at intersections, just to be able to view oncoming traffic and have a, make sure there's no safety hazard there. Wanted to review setbacks, just to make sure any temporary structure associated with a temporary use was going to meet the setbacks of the underlying zoning district. Wanted to make sure circulation was adequate onsite, as well as access point, those existing approaches to the property where they were going to locate, make sure those were clearly defined, and also keep track of the duration. Most of the jurisdictions that we had looked at required a 30-day limitation on temporary uses. They also wanted to check that the temporary use is going to be located in the appropriate zoning district and not, for instance, a residential zoning district. So after we reviewed those jurisdictions, drafted a proposed ordinance, which is before you tonight, we'd really be going in Chapter 3, which is our commercial zoning districts portion of the code, and within central business, general business, motor business, industrial and urban mixed commercial zones, be inserting, under permitted principal uses and structures, temporary uses, which would be subject to the specific use standards, and those are located in Chapter 12 of the zoning code. And then also within the motor business zone, under those permitted principal uses and structures, right now, we have a section which discusses retail enterprises and then provides a large list of retail uses. Towards the end, you have building, materials, stores, and yards. Just wanted to provide clarification that includes landscaping materials, stores, and yards. You have a lot of these incidental uses that come out seasonally, like the landscape supply yard that's associated with Walmart, takes up a portion of the parking lot during the summer. You also have an expansion of the outdoor landscape material area for Moscow Building Supply and other building supply stores, so just wanted to make sure this was not construed as some type of temporary use and would be encompassed under the temporary use ordinance. And then, within the limitations on uses, also within the motor business zone, some zones, and motor business is one of them, some of them require that all uses have to be conducted wholly and entirely within enclosed buildings, and there's a long list under motor business of those uses that are exempt from that requirement, so we'd be inserting landscape supply yards, as well as temporary uses as permitted by this code. Landscape supply yards, just to further that distinction between temporary uses and those landscape uses. Then within Chapter 3, our industrial zone, once again, under permitted principal uses and structures, another just clarifying item, but this is just to make this consistent with the wording in the motor business zone. We strive for consistency as to avoid confusion when you're looking across zoning districts, and so just revise that to say, building and landscape materials, stores, and yards. Then within our definitions portion of the zoning code, we would have to insert temporary use, which we've defined as a land use established for a limited duration which does not require permanent site improvements. Temporary uses include but are not limited to the erection of temporary structures for activities such as fruit and vegetable sales, Christmas tree sales, fireworks sales, art sales, and other retail sales permitted within the zoning district which the proposed use is to be located. And that would bring us to Chapter 12, Specific Use Standards Section. So we'd be inserting standards for temporary uses, insert a portion of applicability and purpose, intended to allow temporary uses upon developed or undeveloped commercial property within the city, subject to the following standards. And these standards are intended to reduce the potential traffic, parking, safety, and nuisance issues, which could potentially be associated with the short-term nature of temporary uses within the city. Then we go into the specific standards of temporary uses. Want to take a look at site access, just to make sure vehicular ingress egress to the property is from an established vehicular approach, so when you're talking about developed property, in almost all circumstances, you're going to have existing approaches through curb cuts and curbing around the perimeter of the property. Now, in those circumstances where the temporary uses are located on maybe an undeveloped lot, which is gravel or dirt, doesn't have those existing approaches, we'd want to have those clearly identified and delineated, not present a traffic hazard to the adjacent roadway, and we want to make sure that our city engineer was comfortable with establishing temporary approaches to those properties. Then we discuss site circulation, just to make sure the parking onsite and the travel lanes, albeit temporary, shall be delineated and maintained, and that's in order to reduce risk of vehicular conflicts, as well as to ensure orderly circulation on the site. Want to make sure setbacks are accounted for within the underlying zone. The setbacks vary depending upon which zone you're in. Just want to make sure any of the proposed temporary structures that are placed on those sites meet the setbacks. And vision triangles, this is already inherent in our code, that you're required to meet vision triangles, but really, it's on street intersections. It's those areas where you go from the curb line extended 40 feet back in either direction, connect those lines to draw a triangular, a triangle. Within those areas, objects are restricted, so you can't place anything above 3 feet in height, which is opaque, and it's just to not present some type of safety hazard for oncoming traffic when you pull up to one of those street intersections. And so that has to be in accordance with our city standard construction specifications and drawings, and those were adopted last year by council. Wanted to clarify the duration. They're restricted to 45 days per calendar year. We previously had 30, but Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation was to up that to 45, so we didn't capture maybe those uses that went 30, 35 days within a calendar year. Wanted to make sure there's no nuisances that were generated associated with temporary uses, so they wouldn't result in dust, noise, tracking of dirt in the right-of-way, or any other nuisances that could be potentially generated with temporary uses. And then lastly, a permit would be required in certain circumstances, and that would be when a temporary use is conducted on undeveloped property or property which does not have an existing developed parking area. So all these standards would apply to all temporary uses, depending upon whether or not they're located in a paved parking area or not. It's just that the folks that wanted to locate on undeveloped property, like the South Cuplet, where there's no, maybe some approach is established, but no parking area for the temporary uses to locate, they'd have to come to our office and get a temporary use permit, just to make sure we have all the standards taken care of there. Planning and Zoning Commission did conduct a public hearing on the ordinance, and that happened on April 8th, and they recommended approval to city council. Staff's recommendation before you tonight is to conduct a public hearing, after considering any testimony, approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules, requiring three complete and separate readings, and that it be read by title and published by summary. I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you might have.
Mike, I have a question. Originally, staff recommended 30 days, but Planning and Zoning changed it to 45 days. And I was, after reading through it, I was kind of guessing it was because of the Christmas tree stands may very well run more than 30 days. Was that kind of the reason for that?
Yeah, no, Christmas tree stands, you know, may be pushing that, as well as the fish stand that shows up in the co-op parking lot every Friday, so maybe those continual, you know, every Friday type uses, they take a few months off, and so they wouldn't reach the 45-day mark, but they would definitely be over the 30-day mark. So they just wanted to provide a little bit more of a buffer on the duration and to give those folks a break.
Okay. Questions for Mike? Walter.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, in 12-7, start with your C that you've got up there right now, requiring the permit only for undeveloped property or property which does not have an existing developed parking area. I understand that, but several of the items preceding that, such as site circulation setbacks, vision triangle, are also applicable to paved parking lots that have pre-designed or pre-used access. You didn't feel it necessary to require everybody to get a permit? Or would it, I'll give you a hint, was it too onerous? Were there too many people that come every year and set up there? I mean, what was the thinking between doing just the undeveloped?
Well, in our observation, we haven't really ran into an issue with that before. If they're in a parking lot, they're usually taking up maybe some additional parking spaces and the travel lanes, you know, the folks that allow them to be there usually regulate on where they can be, and they want them to not prohibit customer parking and circulation onsite. So we didn't really feel that that was too big of an issue, as opposed to the ones that are on undeveloped property, but really didn't want to make it too onerous for people that come every fireworks stands, that do all these requirements already and we don't have any issue with. We'd still be able to go out there and say somebody sets up in the vision triangle, we'd still be able to go out and work with them to relocate these temporary structures, but we didn't feel it was necessary to have them come in and get a permit, you know, when they've been doing it for a number of years and they seem to be working, you know, fine. It was just kind of the last year, the couple of issues that we had with undeveloped property.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Mike before I open the public hearing? Thank you, Michael. I will open the public hearing at 7:50, and I will take all claims. For anybody that's interested that would approve this, please step forward, state your name, and we'll listen to your comments. Saying none, rush this podium. Seeing none rushed this podium, I will take general comments or opposition to this ordinance proposal. I will close it at 7:51, and put the discussion in front of the council. John?
Yeah, I, when this was first brought up to planning and zoning, I thought it was a solution in search of a problem, and I still feel that way, and although I'll support We do seem to love our policies and rules and stuff here in Moscow, and we seem to make a new rule or a new city ordinance, and we don't have anything else to do. We've had two problems in the last year over that particular issue. One was, and they were both, could have been handled without this. But, the questions that were asked at planning and zoning were answered, and good questions were asked. They discussed it front to back, top to bottom, and this is what we came up with. So, I'll support it, although I would really be disheartened if this ordinance was used to prevent people from coming in and putting up a small display area to sell things. I don't think that'll happen, but that would be my only real problem with it.
Dan?
Yeah, I agree with John to an extent, that, you know, we're, it's a solution kind of looking for a problem, but I think that they found a problem when they found a problem with a stand setup, and realizing that our code being exclusionary as it is, didn't allow a lot of things that were already happening to go on. So we had to, you know, staff had to go through and make things, make these changes so things could be allowed, you know, and give it a little bit of buy rights stuff in some of the zones that it is, like a paved, and already a parking lot where they have permission from the property owner. You know, we went over this in the administrative committee the other day, and basically that's what it came down to is, and with that, you know, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules, requiring three complete and separate readings, and that be read by title and published by summary.
Second that?
Beat again.
Dan made a motion, and Jim Boland made his second to approve the ordinance of the amendment of Title IV, Chapter 3, 11, 12 of the Moscow City Code Regarding Temporary Uses, and to approve this ordinance and the suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that it be read by title and published by summary. Wayne?
I just want to make a comment, and John, I agree with you, and it seems like we turn around, every time we turn around, we're finding a need where we have to write another ordinance, or we have to create another rule. And unfortunately, there happens to be instances that happen to jump up that we have to do that, and one example would be one of those particular booths last year where they found this problem, and there was a lack of coordination among various entities as far as what was required of that particular booth. And I think that by having this requirement of a permit, temporary permit for unimproved property, will help coordinate things like that a little bit better. It'll bring all the parties together, so everybody knows what has to be done. So, as much as I wish I didn't have to vote for this, I will.
Art? I'd just like to say that I agree with Dan a bit more about it, that given the exclusionary nature of our codes, by not having this there, we tend to exclude more than we would allow, and this actually provides a broader, more predictable playing field for people to establish their temporary uses. And so I'm in favor mostly for that reason.
Okay. With that, I'll start the roll with you, John.
Aye.
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 And I.
Okay, and six is zero, so the ordinance passed, and it's ordinance number 2015-07.
07?
Okay. Ordinance number 2015-07, an ordinance of the City of Moscow, Idaho Municipal Corporation of the State of Idaho, providing for the amendment of Moscow City Code Title IV, Chapter 3, Chapter 11, Chapter 12, providing for the definition and establishment of standards for temporary uses, providing for the allowance of temporary uses within the central business district, the general business, the motor business, industrial and urban mixed commercial zoning districts, providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable, and providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from the date of its passage, approval and publication according to law. Okay, with that, we will move on to item number six. Don Palmer, Second Quarter Fiscal Financial Report. Don, you have the podium?
Thank you. We presented this on, on April 27th, the second quarter financial report for period ending January 1 to March 31, 2015, for our fiscal year. At that-
Don't be offended, Don.
I'm not. This is really interesting, kids. Just numbers.
Give him a chance.
Darn it, they didn't stay.
Don, you know, I don't want to have a complex over this now, this, you start talking-
Clear the room.
Yeah, I do.
Anybody else want to leave? The crowd walks out.
Darn it. Go ahead, continue, Don, sorry.
That's quite all right. Anyway, at that report, I, this normally goes on consent agenda, but I asked for it to be pulled again because we had a classification error of which, I'm doing some cross-training in our finance department, and we're, have staff doing some new functions and learning some stuff about the financial report. And one of the things that was missed, it was in the totals but not in the classifications, was transfers, operating transfer out of the general fund for a million eighty-eight thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars. So I'm here to report that that transfer goes from operations down to transfer. Transfer helps support parks and recreation, the arts fund, and streets, and so, probably forgetting one, but anyway, those particular operating funds in the tune of a million eighty-eight thousand over the first six months of the year. I might as well go through the rest of the report, too. The revenues for the six months is nineteen million seven hundred nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. The expenditures was sixteen million dollars, sixteen point seven million dollars. Of that, of note is that payroll is about forty-three percent expended, and the reason for that is we have twenty-six pay periods, and of which we'd normally be right at thirteen, but it only, is only representative of twelve. And then the other things is that we've did the, of caper projects, we've done about four hundred thousand dollars with the ball fields at the Moscow City of, Moscow School District Community Play Fields, I need to restate the name of it. Anyway, about four hundred thousand dollars is out there, and then three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is expended out of the caper projects, which supports an array of projects, including transportation and general fund operations. With that, everything else is fairly, and enterprise fund's fairly stable, the water fund is normally below in revenues this time of year because it's a consumptive-based system, and we see the majority of those revenues in the summertime and fall. And with that, any other questions I'd be more than happy to answer.
Thank you, Don. No questions for Don?
As usual, good report.
Well, I tell you what, I would accept a motion to approve. More direct staff-
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we accept Don's report.
Second.
Okay. Dan made the motion to accept the report with Wayne Cross's second. I will start the roll with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay. Thank you very much, Don. Okay, item number seven, request from Bootsers for a beer and wine garden in the public right-of-way. Gary Reedner will present.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a case of first impression before the council. As the council knows, a couple of weeks ago, you were requested to take a look at a different policy for use of downtown rights-of-way and street closures, street closure permits, and whether or not the council felt that within certain circumstances in the Main Street Downtown Business District, that the council would be willing to consider whether to allow alcohol within certain limitations within the public right-of-way pursuant to local community events. So essentially, council reviewed that, issued that ordinance, which is very similar in nature to the ordinance that was reviewed several years ago, Jim Boland can tell you exactly when, when the council was asked whether or not they would consider allowing beer and wine sales in city parks for community events as well. At that time, council said they would do that, but they wanted to make sure that they kept full control on behalf of the community of the use of the city's parks, and so allows that pursuant to a resolution of the city council. So each event must come through staff to get permitted, and staff brings a report, a recommendation to city council, and city council then has the ability, has the obligation under the ordinance, to pass a specific resolution allowing the event or not allowing the event. And if the council allows the event, then it is allowed within certain parameters that are set out by the resolution. That's exactly the same process that was recommended to the city council for public rights-of-way downtown. And so, that was passed by the city council, and amazingly enough, within just a week, we received a request for a beer garden to be placed in the public right-of-way pursuant to a community event. Pat Greenfield is here on behalf of Bootsers, who is the applicant. Committee looked at this a couple of, excuse me, last week. The application is included in your packet as well as a diagram of the area. There are a couple pieces to this. One is the street closure permit, which is recommended for approval or denial by the fire department, the street department and the public works department. This street closure permit was approved for May 15th from six o'clock to eleven o'clock at night. Main Street itself from third to second, I believe, first, sorry, off one digit. At any rate, so, the street closure permit was the first part. Secondly, as part of that street closure, Bootsers requested that a community concert be allowed to be held in the right-of-way during that period of time. The community concert, of course, you have a band, you're going to have noise, so then a noise permit or noise regulations are administered by the chief of police, and David Duke is here for any questions the council might have. So, Chief Duke reviewed that, indicated that his recommendation was that he would not allow waiver of the noise ordinance after ten o'clock. So, the third element that was to be brought forward was the permit or the resolution to allow the beer garden. So that is what is before you tonight. This was looked at by appropriate staff, city clerk, looked at it, looked at the configuration, the map that you see in your packet has a specific delineated area, just as the one that we're most familiar with in the city parks is rendezvous in the park, which is held every summer in East City Park, and they petitioned for a resolution for a beer and wine garden, and it sets out a specific area. It was at one time a designated serving area, and now it takes up a lot of the park, but it's regulated nonetheless. So, the beer and wine regulations for serving have to still be observed, so there has to be controls to make sure that the beer and wine sales are done in a legal fashion, that age is being verified, and that the recommendation from the chief of police and is in the resolution is that two police officers are to be utilized by the applicant to maintain security, to make sure that those rules are being observed, and as this is a case of first impression, as I indicated, in order to see how it goes. And that's exactly the same situation that rendezvous had the first year that they applied. They were directed that they would have two police officers to assist them in that, in that case, and of course, these are paid for by the applicant in subsequent years because it turned out, fortunately, that there were no incidents in rendezvous, down to one police officer, and then private security was allowed to be utilized. So, in the future, perhaps council wants to consider that, but the recommendation for this one is to allow it, as long as those officers are used to provide security. All of the other alcohol, or, excuse me, beer and wine serving laws need to be observed as well. The term of the event is being recommended from seven o'clock until, excuse, yeah, seven o'clock to ten o'clock on May 15th. So it will end about the same time as the band stops playing, the street closure is through eleven o'clock, it'll take probably that much time to clear the right-of-way. So with that, staff is bringing this to you. It's not typically staff's place to make a recommendation on something like this, either pro or con. We make a recommendation that if the council decides that it wants to proceed with it, the recommendations are held within the resolution. The council's action tonight is to, if you decide that you wish to grant it, then you need to consider the resolution and move to accept the resolution, make any modifications, but the resolution needs to be passed in order that the event can proceed. I will note that it is May 15th, so this resolution will have to be passed at this council meeting in order for that event to take place. As I said, Pat Greenfield is here. If you wish to hear from her, you have staff's recommendations on the resolution in your packet.
Dan, the administrative committee heard this last Monday.
We did, and that's where we came up with the, a lot of the recommendations that we're seeing in here, is, you know, we wanted to, we agreed with Chief Duke on the noise ordinance portion, and, but this actual street closure portion makes sense for, you know, set up and tear down, you know, as far as having an hour on either end to help with that. So, you know, I, I'm okay with approving it as we did. We didn't hear from the applicant at that meeting, if, I don't know if she wanted to talk tonight about anything.
Pat, you want to come up?
I was out of town for ten days during that, and I sent two guys along, but actually just-
Please come, Pat, come on up to the-
I was wearing my ankle right before I came in, and I couldn't put the E R on, so I couldn't get to the elevator.
Okay. Give you a piggyback right up here, I can help you. I'm kidding.
I have ice water on.
Yeah, you did, there were two representatives that were here.
And they, and they said that they would, those representatives did say that they thought that Ms. Pat would agree with, with the, our recommendations and hold to it.
Walter?
Because, because Pat's voice isn't amplified, she indicated that she does agree with the need for the officers on this initial, and, anything else?
I don't think so, if I should all come.
Okay. Walter, you had a question?
Gary, just to, just to reiterate or claim or clarify, this is a one-time approval-
Yes.
-for May 15. Subsequent events will have to come back in the same fashion with the request.
Each event, yes.
Okay. And if I may, Mr. Mayor-
Yes, sir.
-question for Chief Duke?
Evening.
Probably asking the obvious, but the police department has no problem being able to enforce the ordinances and requirements of this, as it's being presented to us?
No. We have done this several times, and some of the Main Street closures where we enforced the sidewalk cafe, this is expanding it just a little further.
There have been some, I don't want to call them problems, some questions about some of those activities, or activities during those events that you mentioned. You don't see any problem with this particular proposal?
No, but I know you have firsthand knowledge of them, so you were there.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Other questions from council? John?
Well, I would just make a motion that we accept the request under the circumstances that have been put in front of us, and we- the, uh, circumstances that have been put in front of us, and we approve the resolution.
I'll second that. Okay, we got a motion by John Webber, a second by Jim Boland to.
Need to include seven to ten in police.
To approve the, uh, ord- or the resolution in accordance with the recommendations from the administrative committee, uh, with the attached resolution. So, everybody clear on this? John, we'll start with you.
Aye.
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 And aye.
Okay. You have your resolution, very good. Have some fun with it, Pat. Okay, item number eight is, uh, Gormley Park Tennis Court Renovation Project 2015. Tom Grundon, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor, and city council members. Uh, last week at the Public Works Finance Committee meeting, I brought forward a proposal to have the three existing asphalt tennis courts at Gormley Park removed. They've been out of service for over ten years, as I understand it, and the proposal calls for the installation of a new con- post-tension concrete, uh, tennis court set up with the pertinent, uh, amenities such as fencing, net posts, line striping, and so forth. Uh, the cost of the proposal, including the base bid, one alternate, uh, concrete testing services, and a ten percent contingency fund, brought the total proposal cost to just a shade over $200,000. Uh, the Public Works Finance Committee then had a lively discussion as to the cost benefit of the proposal to the city, and if indeed this would be the, in the best interest of the city, to spend $200,000 on three tennis courts at this point in time. Uh, the committee then, after further discussion, unanimously voted to recommend to the full city council that the two bids that were submitted for the project be rejected. So I'm bringing that proposal to you tonight, and will stand for any questions or what have you, Your Honor.
Okay, Wayne, the public, or Public Works and Finance, listened to this last Monday.
Uh, we did, and, uh, been presented pretty well by Tom as to our discussion. We had a pretty good discussion as to, uh, cost benefits for three court, three tennis courts for $200,000. The fact that they haven't been used for ten years and, and the price is $50,000 more than what the engineering estimate was, is an extraordinary amount of money. And so the, uh, Public Works and Finance Committee just could not make a recommendation, um, to accept that or to reject the bids. Our feeling was that the bids needed to be rejected. Whether they would be rebid at a later date would be up to the city to make that determination. Um, but we thought it would be a good idea to let the full council have a discussion on this also.
Okay. Um, there's a gentleman doing a public, the public comment, even though this is not a public hearing, I'll let you come up and testify if you come to the podium and give us your name, address. Yeah, he can do it if you want him to. Doesn't matter, just, and tell us what's on your mind, give us your name, your address, sir, and.
My name's John Kovach, I'm the head tennis coach at Moscow High School, and, um, I read the article that was, um, in the Daily News, and I just wanted to comment on, on, uh, how much, uh, use those courts probably would receive, and it would be substantial. Um, right now, at least during the spring, when we have our seasons, um, the courts are blocked off from three o'clock to about seven o'clock, um, when the light permits. Uh, during that time, we have, uh, fifty-plus players on six courts, and, um, any, um, people in the community who wanna use those courts are, are blocked off during that time. Uh, usually during that time as well, the University of Idaho courts are being used by the tennis team there and by, um, students at the university, and so the public really is limited of where they can play in the afternoon during the prime times during the spring. Um, uh, I've been in Moscow for a, a while off and on, and, um, we did use, the high school did use, um, back when I was an assistant coach in the nineties, those courts at, um, West Side, um, when, in order to, uh, prevent us having to have limited court times and, and dividing our practices. Right now, we have to divide our practices. Um, our varsity only gets about an hour and a half at the most of, um, hitting time to make sure that our JV players get adequate time to improve and, and fill those positions later on. Uh, so we've, we're splitting our time with those courts. In the past, we used those courts so we could have practices at the same time varsity and JV, where now we have to divide them up. So they were being used substantially, uh, during that time. Um, and again, I wanted to also address the, um, the community not being able to use those courts during that block-off time during the spring, and I know that as a community member, that, that can be discouraging.
John, a couple of questions for you. How long you been a tennis co- uh, coach at Moscow High?
This is my second year at Moscow High, but, like I said, I coached, uh, as assistant for three years back in the nineties.
Okay, well, well, back in the nineties is twenty-plus years ago, so let's just talk about the last few years. Do you know, were you here prior to two years ago, like in the last five years, ten years?
No, I've been here, this is my second year coaching, but my third year here.
Okay.
Working at the district, and we've had, like I said, the last two years, fifty-plus players during the springtime, um, trying to, um, organize practices on six courts.
Okay, my second question to you is, during that three years that you've been here, have you used those courts down at Gormley?
They're not serviceable.
Okay, so they, they have not been usable for you guys?
They have not been serviceable.
That was my question. Does anybody have, uh, Walter, you got a question for?
Uh, yes, sir, just to make sure I understand what you're saying. The only courts Moscow has now are owned by either the university or by the school district.
I'm not sure who owns the, the courts. I'm, I'm assuming they're owned by the school district, but obviously they're, they're paid by taxpayers.
But, well, no, my, my, my point is that it appears that we do not have any.
We do not.
Public courts.
We do not have public.
Where the public can pull up and, and use without some artificial restriction on, no, this is team time, you can't be on these, or this is after-school time, you can't be on here now.
That's correct.
And Gormley, I've, and I don't know tennis, I don't play tennis. Appears that Gormley was the only public, I'm looking at Gary, he would know, only public, uh, tennis courts that have been available in the past in Moscow.
It's the only tennis courts owned by the city. If you look in the, uh, packet, Dwight has in the packet, uh, recounting of the tennis courts, who owns them, and if they are available. Uh, essentially what, uh, his memo, if I can paraphrase it, Dwight's here, but that those are available whenever they are not being used for classes or for team sports at both the University of Idaho and Moscow High School. So, as the coach indicated, in the afternoons when there is practice, I, I can't say what the demand would be at that time. I will say that in my discussions with Dwight, that the city courts as well, um, would also likely have a Parks and Rec, uh, use on them that would make them unavailable for general public use, and of course, the obvious thing is, is if Gormley Park courts are being used by the Moscow High tennis team, they wouldn't be available for public use during that time either.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Coach.
Thank you.
You bet. Well, how would council like to move forward with this? Questions for Tom?
Wayne had a hand.
Wayne?
I went out and, uh, last week and, and, um, walked through that area, looked at the courts, and, um, had a discussion with some of the school district staff pertaining to the use of, uh, West Park School and that particular area. Um, most people probably are not aware that West Park does not have its own playgrounds. They have one small triangle area directly south of the school, but, uh, the kids go out and play on the ballfields. They play on city-owned property, Parks and Rec property. And, uh, that is the only hard-surfaced area that's available for recreational purposes for West Park School. They do have some special-needs children, they have, uh, there's a little girl that's has, that's autistic, and she has, uh, constant adult supervision, and for whatever reason, some of these special-needs children are not able to play on, on, on a turf area, and so they, they do have a need for a hard-surfaced area. Um, I'm still not going to support spending $200,000 to rebuild these tennis courts. I just, I just can't in good conscience say that. Um, but I would like to see the Parks and Rec Department and the city have a little bit more discussion, maybe have some discussion with the school district, uh, as to maybe some of the ideas that they may have. Um, perhaps there's a situation where the city could, could deed the property to the school district until such time as the school is no longer there, and allow the school district to worry about what they wanna do with it, if they wanna do some type of work. Um, I'm not even so excited about spending the money to tear up all the concrete and put sod out in that small area. I just, it just doesn't seem like a worthwhile space to me, after having visited, to spend, uh, that kinda money on. So, uh, I'm, I'm going to make a motion to, um, to.
Reject the bids.
Reject, yeah, reject all the bids, and then direct staff to have continuing discussions on that property.
I wonder if I could ask Tom a question before you, before that proceeds as a vote?
Well, there's no second yet.
Then we can discuss.
Okay. Go ahead, Jim, get the floor.
Uh, Tom, if, uh, those courts were to be renovated in some way, would it be possible to make them serviceable for high school practice or public use without complete demolition and redoing them? How, what would it take to, to resurface that? In other words, if, uh, you had poasphalt come in and put another layer of asphalt on top of that and restripped it, uh, as opposed to the complete demolition, was, is that a feasible thing to do?
In my opinion, that's not feasible at all. The site's in a floodplain that takes water on occasion. The asphalt that's there in the subgrade is not in good condition and is failing. We have cracks through the asphalt up to this wide. Uh, to do that would be.
Yeah.
Disastrous at best.
Do you have any idea what it would cost to, to put another layer of asphalt on that would last, let's say, five years?
I'm venturing into areas that I shouldn't, but it would be expensive, and I'd have to quantify the, the, the number, but it would not be inexpensive. And for the benefit gained in five or seven years, it's gonna break and crack again, or sooner, 'cause the ground is moving out there constantly.
Well, I used to mentor a child at West Park School, and we played soccer in there a lot because it was a place where the ball didn't roll away.
Correct.
And, um, so it has, it does have that, uh, use, you know, the fences, that you can, you can play ball in there and you don't have to chase the ball away, it doesn't go in the creek or anything.
Sure. Uh, and these courts have been reconditioned on more than one occasion, as I understand it, with either overlays such as you suggested or other things, uh, but they've continued to deteriorate, and that was the reason for the proposal.
All right, you had a question?
Yeah, I was gonna say, part of the problem that I see is the magnitude of the bids to do this. I support having tennis courts in town, but I think the timing of the bid and the size of the bids preclude us going forward with them at this time, and I wouldn't mind seeing it come back in another eight months or something to take better advantage of bid times on this, because right now, the companies have all got their bids out, and so, well, if we wanna have it done, it's gonna cost ya. And I think we can do better in the whole process. Instead of jumping the gun to get it done now, wait for a while and go for the better bid later.
If, if I may, Your Honor, uh, I have corresponded with the contractor who provided us the low bid, and the timing of the bids had nothing to do with the price. It's our location, the lack of available concrete screeds, and the fact that it's only three tennis courts, and to bring a concrete crew up for two weeks of work drives the price.
Perhaps we could team up with some of the other local municipalities and get a bulk discount by keeping our eyes open in the future and playing a little bit smarter with the whole bidding process.
Walter, did you have a?
Dwight made my point regarding timing. I'd seen, I'd seen that memo from Tom.
Dwight.
Dwight, I'm sorry.
Jimmy, you got a question?
Tom.
Uh, in terms of.
Sorry, Tom.
The location of these courts at, where they are now, um, if we, if we did proceed and put in all-new concrete courts there, they're still in the floodplain, they're still, that, that issue still exists, eh?
That is correct, but post-tension concrete is designed to be a minimum of twenty-year life expectancy, which is more than twice what we'd get with a typical tear-out and reinstall of asphalt. Uh, it's a much stronger, uh, much more durable product, and it would be impervious to water and saturation issues.
Is there not another location that where, where we could do this, where that wouldn't be an issue?
Uh, we have a number of open spaces around town, but that's not for me to comment on at this time. I will say that our assistant city engineer recommended that we do not go down the path of asphalt tennis courts in that site or recapping them, so just.
Okay, well, with that. Gary's got something. You wanna, you got a point you wanna make, Gary?
Yeah, the only point I wanted to make is rejection of bids. The reason the agenda item says, um, the recommendation is to reject all bids and provide staff further direction, is council knows, um, staff just got finished, Parks and Rec Commission just got finished with a Parks and Rec master plan, um, and so it is possible to send this back, uh, look at it through the prioritization that's in the master plan. Additionally, as we're going through our strategic planning process, one of the exercises that Parks and Rec is going through is to look holistically at the assets that are available in the city. And I realize that there may be times when tennis courts aren't available twenty-four seven for the use of the public, just walking up and using them. However, we have a limited amount of finances that we can bring to the table and a lot of needs. So, as Dwight's memo points out, and just asking the council to consider this, as Dwight memo, Dwight's memo points out, even under NRPA standards, the availability of tennis courts in the city meets the NRPA standards, whether you believe those standards are applicable to Moscow or not, and there are some who don't, um, is that need being met? And in light of the limited resources available to the city, does it make sense to even take a look at redoing these? So, just food for thought in the future.
Mr. Mayor, a comment, if I may, to Gary? In response, Gary, I, I, I don't have any problem with the stats, national stats, but I would question whether or not those are talking about a city where every available court has artificial limitations placed on it because of its ownership. In other words, it's taken out of the public availability because they're owned by either a university or by a school district. I understand the numbers and the fact that it's just, with the pure numbers, we've got plenty, but you take 'em out of circulation, you don't. I would, I, I'll vote to reject the bids, but, uh, you know, a, a room full of tennis players saying we need more courts probably would go a long way, just a comment for the gentleman sitting out here. Thank you.
Okay, what we've got is a motion by Wayne, a second by Dan, to reject all bids in accordance with section I, one B dash eight of the contract specifications. I'll start with you, Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay, so those bids will be rejected. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item number nine, downtown parking permits, status review. Les, you have the podium, sir. How are you tonight?
I'm well, thank you.
Mayor Lambert, members of the council, this is an item that, uh, we periodically address. It has been a couple of years this time around, but, uh, as you will recall, the city has, um, over the course of years, taken a pretty hard look at parking in the downtown area, um, particularly along the Main Street corridor and in the central business district, and the availability of parking on the streets, and the availability of parking on the four publicly-owned lots located, uh, downtown and here behind City Hall. Some years ago, uh, changes were made to that system. We had the intention at that time of encouraging employees and business owners, and in some cases, some residents, um, to not park on the streets, but to use instead the public lots, uh, that were available. Uh, and the reason for that is, uh, we wanted to make sure that, uh, parking was available on the street, in front of the businesses, for those customers coming downtown, also to help, um, I guess mitigate or eliminate that three-hour shuffle that used to occur because everybody would park, they'd go into work for three hours, and they had to run out and move their cars someplace else because of the three-hour limitation on parking on the street. To help facilitate that, the, uh, city modified its parking permit program, drastically lowering the parking, uh, permit rate for an annual, um, permit from, I think we were in the $300 and change range, down to, at that time, about $75. Since that time, uh, it has been modified upwards to $85. Uh, the council also at that time established a number of permits that would be available in the system. We've modified that number and increased them over the years. So, we're looking at that issue again, and I'll give you a little background as to why. Uh, again, we have four parking lots in the system, uh, North Jackson, South Jackson Street, both located west of, of Main. Uh, the City Hall lot immediately behind me. The City Hall Lot immediately behind me here, and then the Jefferson Street Lot, again, behind me, but across the street, across Jefferson. You can see the number of spaces included. By far, the South Jackson Street Lot is the largest and frankly, the most popular of the lots in the system. Over the years, we have, again, tried to take a look at what has been the usage of the lots. Are they being utilized fully? Are they, is the demand greater than what's available? Is it, you know, half of the use, or half the lot being used? So, we've actually done four different surveys, the first of those back in '09, when this was really a major topic the first time through, again, in '11, and then most recently here in March of this year. Just a couple of quick tables here, kind of give you a general feel of the type of information that we gather. This first one happens to be from the first survey in 2009 in September, and we were looking at two different characteristics. So, the number of parking spaces that were used by people displaying, cars displaying permits for parking, and then the number of parking spaces being used by all cars within the lot. So, back in September of 2009, permit holders were in the average of, you know, 22% of the spaces, whereas the overall usage of the lot was into the low 60s. That number was similar in December, slightly lower on the overall usage in December. Jumping forward to 2011, a little bit higher numbers here in the 27 range, 65%, so mid-60s for the overall usage of the lots. And then we've seen a slight decline, this, these are in the South Jackson Lot, I should say, for this survey, slight decline in March of this year, back down to around 23% and 55%. There's a lot of numbers here, it's a little hard to follow, so I put them in a more graphical format to show you the four lots, a little bit easier. The red line here at the top represents all of the vehicles parked in the lots. So, you can see from 2009 through 2015, the total usage of the South Jackson Street Lot has hovered around 60%, a little above, a little below, but in that range. And then the number of permits in the system has been in the low 20s to upper 20s and hovering in between 20 and 30% over that six-year period. In some of the other lots, the City Hall Lot, this one is a bit more spiky, and this is because there's a much smaller number of spaces, so one car makes a substantial difference in the percentage of usage. So, again, you see overall numbers ranging from the mid-50s up to just over 80%. A greater share of those spaces being used by permit holders. So, we're, you know, lows in the, in the low 30s, up to almost 70%. Again, it's, you know, one or two permits make quite a bit of difference. Jefferson Street Lot started fairly low, but it's been growing over the years. This is the one that's really trended upward. I think it has to do with folks discovering that it's there, a lot of times there are spaces available, some of the businesses and school folks on this end of town, learning that, yes, I can buy a permit there and park all year and, and get there pretty readily and easily. So, we've had a growth trend, so from the low 40s up into the mid-50s for overall usage, low 20s to mid-30% on total usage in the lot. And then the North Jackson Lot, again, this is one located north of Third Street, permit usage has dipped a bit from when we started, down to, you know, just under 20%, almost to 40% this last time. Overall usage has been pretty steady, hovering around 70%. So, our percentage of permit holders is, in relation to the overall usage, has definitely gone up. So, we're seeing people probably, again, recognizing that the lots are available, there are spaces available. We've got some different businesses that have gone in on the north end, north of Third Street, over the last three or four years. So, that may have changed the, the character of the users on this north end, perhaps, you know, bringing in folks that would need to park that maybe weren't there before, or recognizing the, the value of the permits, that that was not the case previously. And then just looking overall, all four lots combined generally were hovering in the 60, 65% total usage, permits down in that 20% to 30% range. To me, the important number here is really this one, in that, over the course of four surveys, which were a week-long each, surveyed at different times of the day throughout a five-day week period, we're seeing average uses in 60% range. That tells me that there's capacity available in these lots. So, encouraging greater use of those lots would be something that I think the system can handle. There's still room, is really the, the message. All right, some of the numbers, you have a question, Dan?
Yeah, go back one there. You're talking about 60% of usage, and that is average. Our, yeah, our total spaces, and this will come into play when we talk about how many we'd like to increase it to, what's our total space available?
All lots?
All lots, 180, 181, I guess. Is that our total?
Out in that range, right. It's good that you asked that question, because that's where I'm going.
Yeah, right there.
We're getting there.
Okay. One of the things we do when a permit is sold is we've been asking the applicant for the permit to fill out a little survey, and periodically, we, the police department takes these in, and they, they provide that information to Jim Pifner upstairs, and she tabulates all that and sends out summaries of the information periodically. And what we have in our latest one is looking at the 2014, last complete year of the system, what did we sell, and what was the preference stated by those purchasers for, for lots? Where are they going to park, really? And as has been the case pretty much throughout, you know, roughly half have said, hey, we're going to park in the South Jackson Street Lot. I mean, that's where the demand lies. So, that was then followed by the North Jackson Lot, and then you can see City Hall and Jefferson. When you look at the cumulative, this goes back as far as we have had the surveys, we didn't have them on day one, but we captured them shortly thereafter. That trend seems to be pretty consistent with the overall. We've seen the Jackson Street Lot come down a little bit. That's obviously due to increases in things like Jefferson offsetting and perhaps changing some of the desired use. I see a question.
Walter, just while you're on that slide, Les, if you buy a permit, you can park in any one of the four lots. We're just asking, given your druthers, where do you plan to park?
What's your preference?
Yeah. If they're not limited to it, they can park in any of four, but we're trying to get some idea of desire.
Correct.
Okay.
And keeping in mind, because I didn't mention it at the beginning, but for folks that may not be familiar with the permit system, the downtown parking in the lots and on the street is a three-hour limit. The permit system allows you to stay all day.
Just in the lots, though?
In the lots.
And all night?
It's not restricted at night in the lots. They are available for overnight parking.
But the street isn't?
But the street is not. So, if you want to park downtown overnight, there are two options, park in the lots, or there are a couple of streets now that are, Second, Fourth, and Fifth have overnight parking east of Maine. We did that a few years ago. But for extended parking during the day, really the only option is, is the permit system. Otherwise, it's a three-hour limitation to move your car. Again, a few of the numbers from the survey itself, again, broken down into the 2014 year, and then the overall that we've seen. One of the other questions asked is, describe yourself. You know, are you an employee, are you a business owner, are you a resident, or are you a student? Who are you? And by far, we're seeing, you know, employees overall making up the, the largest percentage. And then downtown residents, residents, dents, being, being next. And then business owners also fit in there, right here, third. So, to me, the good message here is that we're seeing greater than 50% of the purchasers are related to the businesses themselves, which means the message was received, don't park on the street, go to the lot, buy a permit, you can park all day, you don't have to do the three-hour shuffle. The downtown residents, I think, was a bit of a side benefit that came along with this process, that there are a lot of apartments downstairs, I think a lot more than we may have realized when we started this years ago, and we're seeing those residents recognizing that, hey, I can park my car there all day, if I can leave it overnight, essentially, I've got 24-hour parking for extended periods. And if I live downtown, that's a good thing. And so, that has worked, and we're not seeing the numbers so high that it's creating a capacity issue at this stage. We seem to have a pretty good balance there. The 14 numbers were similar. We actually saw, actually, a greater percentage of employees in this case taking advantage of what was coming available in the permit sales. So, where does this lead us, which is the question of the night, is what do we do for permits, and potentially, what do we do for pricing on permits? Currently, there are 130 permits available. All 130 of those permits have been purchased and have been for some time. Typically, the large majority of those sell as annual permits rather than quarterly or monthly. You get a few of those. By and large, it's, it's annuals. This number of 21 on the waiting list was from March. It went up to 29, has since dropped to 28, and I think that's where we sit right now. So, you know, every month, a couple of permits become available in the cycle, certain times of the year, perhaps a few more. But they're being snapped up quickly off the waiting list. So, right now, we're sitting at about 28 on the waiting list that would like to have a permit, but cannot buy one, because we've limited the sales to 130 permits. Over the years, the average has been about 12, since we've been tracking it. So, we're a little higher right now, the man's up from what we've historically seen. The proposal that staff has recommended is that we bump the number of permits available from 130 to 150. When we put this together, that was based on the idea that there were 21 on the list, that would leave only one on the waiting list at that point. Obviously, as I just said, we're actually now up to 28, so that would still leave eight on the list. 150, possibly 160, worth considering. There's capacity in the system, and there, there are enough stalls out there open with 60% average usage that I think we can handle that just fine. If we were to, in essence, wipe out that waiting list, that backlog, the waitlist would go to zero until the system sees more demand placed upon it. If there's concern that making it 160 perhaps would, perhaps bring in too many applicants and we're being too successful, one of the ways you can deal with that is on pricing. And so, that's the other piece. The current rates for 2015, the monthly rate is $12, quarterly is a 30, annual rate is $85, which is a bargain to have a permit for a year. There is room, based on the demand, to adjust this number. And that's one of, you know, the, there's a balancing act out there about how many permits are available, how many spaces are out in use and available, and what's the capacity? If demand gets too great, you can back demand down slightly by increasing pricing. So, with that in mind, a suggestion would be to go from an $85 to a $95 annual fee, and then the quarterly and monthly would follow along with that. In the Public Works Finance Committee last week, we talked about this. There was some pretty good discussion amongst the committee members about how many additional permits should we have. It ranged from maybe five or 10 additional up to 25 additional. So, we had quite a bit of variation in there in opinion. Based on that, the, the committee did not come forward with the recommended number, just that the council should consider it, and seemed encouraged by the idea of increasing the availability of permits available. As far as the rates, I think there was less desire to adjust the rate. I think one of the comments was made that, let's do one thing at a time and adjust the number of permits available, see how that goes. If the demand is still higher than perhaps what we want to allow in permits, then perhaps the rate comes up a bit to dampen that slightly. So, those are the questions that really are before the council. Do you want to change the number of permits available? If so, to what level? Would you like to change the rate that would be applied to those permits that are sold from that point forth? And if so, to what level?
Dan?
Yeah, I got a, a couple of questions, maybe for Chief Duke. First one, we talked about the waiting list there, well, they kind of both deal with the waiting list. I guess first off, when a permit is come and due, does the permit holder have the right to, they have the right to renew it before it would go to the next person on the list?
Correct. Our receptionist calls them two weeks prior to them expire, giving them the opportunity to come in and renew.
Okay. And then the other thing, I know this part's probably hard to track, but have we had inquiries into the permit availability that we, that those folks did not choose to go on the waiting list that would make that waiting list larger if, if, if they had done so?
Correct. There are a few that, when they found out, especially recently, where the waiting list is over 20, declined to even put their name on the list.
Any idea, I mean, 10, 5?
Five or 10, I think most.
Walter had a question.
A couple of questions, or points for Les, if I may. Transportation Commission worked on this for a year before this came forward to council back in '08. And my memory, and I didn't check this, my memory is we started at $65 and 100 spaces, and we've had two increases in price and quantity over the years. This is our third consideration of adjusting quantity and/or price. And then the other thing, if I may, you made the statement, I believe, Les, that all the lots are three-hour lots. I believe there are, there are four to six spaces on the north side of Jefferson that are totally unregulated.
The northern half of the Jefferson Lot is unregulated. That is correct.
Yeah, that, it doesn't have a three-hour limit, and we, we park a lot of, during the school year, apparently, a lot of high school students there.
That is correct.
But the whole lot is available for permits, is that correct?
The southern half is...
Southern half is permit on?
Permit only for extended...
And three-hour?
Actually, it's, it's permit only, the way it's signed.
Okay.
It's permit only.
So, there's no, there's no three-hour in the Jefferson Lot?
Or the City Hall Lot?
And...
City, City Hall Lot's permit only?
Yes, the Jefferson, the south half is permit only, the north half is unregulated.
Okay.
There's no hour limitation. In the City Hall Lot, the section that is kind of the southeast quadrant, if you will, is permit only. The rest of it is signed as either city vehicle parking or City Hall parking. There's not a limitation on that, but the intent, obviously, is that you're here for City Hall business.
Art, you had a question?
Yeah, a couple of questions. One, do we have an idea of whether the permit fees are covering the cost of the program? Is there any way to get a handle around that?
Well, I'd actually have to let Chief Duke speak to that, but I don't know that there's a substantial cost to the parking permit program. Obviously, there's the enforcement aspect, which would go along with other parking enforcement within the system.
Can you repeat that, Les? I didn't hear what you said.
So, I don't, you know, there's, I don't know if there's a great cost to the permit system itself, but there is a cost to the enforcement aspect of making sure that folks are either not staying beyond three hours in the lot, or that they've got a permit if they are there longer than that. But that's part of the regular circuit, as I understand it, of the parking enforcement personnel that are doing the downtown parking.
And secondly, do we know what University of Idaho is charging for their blues?
64.
Yeah, I believe it's in the mid-60s, yeah, 64.
They've been 64 for at least three years.
64, 65. So, we are certainly above that, and that was intentional, as has been pointed out in the past, because we didn't want this to become, you know, particularly attractive to university students to park here and walk to campus. I mean, the idea was to keep it available for downtown uses.
Okay. Well, I, I'd have a go, and I'd like to propose that we raise the number of permits to 155, clean out the vast majority of the backlog of people on the waiting list. Clearly, there's that many spaces available in an unused fashion, and I think the program's working very well for providing a place for employees and owners to park during the day so that they aren't congesting the parking spaces intended for customers, and also provides a good set of relief for people who actually live downtown, gives them a place to park their car without having to worry about going out and moving it every day or every few hours. So, that makes downtown a more attractive living place. Given the cost of university permits at the moment, I'd be happy to leave the permit cost where it is, and then see what happens with the waiting list. Should it redevelop, then maybe we should reconsider the cost of the permits, but for right now, I'd be more interested in providing a solution to the waiting list issue and encourage people to take advantage of the program and get off of the streets.
I'll second that motion.
That's a long motion.
Okay, well, I will...
155 of the permit prices where they are.
Yeah, I'll reread it for you after what Art had just said. He made a motion to increase the number of green parking permits available to 155 and leave the fee structure as it is.
There's no color.
Well, it says right here, no color.
They're green permits.
They happen to be, oh, okay, I'm sorry. My confusion is that years ago, there were three different colors at three different structures, and we went to a single permit.
Chief Duke's got a question here, or a point?
There's a magenta permit that's West Park.
We have two colored permits. Magenta is West Park, but those are bought by the school district.
Okay.
So, the green permit is the correct term?
Yes, please put green permit in.
Okay. Everybody understand the motion? We'll start with John.
Oh, wait.
Bob, you got something you want to stick in and change?
Well, just want to remind the council, seems my lot in life tonight to remind you that, you know, part of what these fees go for is refurbishing the parking lots. And we just talked about the cost of asphalt. $85 or adjusting the permit fees would increase the amount of money available to the city to be able to keep up on these parking lots. If we're not able to generate enough funds in the parking program, then we're forced to do it with street funds. So, just wanted the council to consider that. And of course, the changes wouldn't take place till October 1st anyway, when the fee resolution comes out, but just wanted to remind the council that those funds can be allocated for that renovation.
I think we need to go back and remember, why did we actually create this permit process to begin with and revitalize it back in 2008? And that was because of the cost complaints about people parking on, business owners and employees parking on the streets, not leaving any place for people to park when they wanted to go shopping. The whole goal was to remove these vehicles and get them into a more of a day-long permanent parking spot. We are accomplishing that mission, and that was, that was the purpose of doing this all along. It was not to fund, not to say that we don't need money. I agree with that. But I still want to stick with the long-range goal, and that is to continue to entice the employees and owners to buy permits and not park on the street and not play the three-hour shuffle, which I see still going on, and I'm still getting complaints from business owners about other businesses that are doing exactly that. So, you know, if we can get up to this point where we've got permitted uses and we've got the main parking lots are being up constantly at 75 to 80% occupancy, then I'd be willing to talk about raising the cost. But at this point in time, I still want to see more parking on the street freed up for shopping.
Jim?
The idea of this is, we're trying to find an equilibrium between the supply and demand and the pricing for that. And if we proceed with this, if we increase the supply to 155, and that eliminates the, and that makes the waiting list disappear, and there's no complaints about that, then we've sort of found that equilibrium. If we raise it to 155 and we still have a waiting list, then the price needs to go up. Because that's not equilibrium, then. If that's the amount of spaces that we want to make available, and they're underpriced if there's more demand than there is supply. So, at that point, we need to go up. So, I kind of agree with Art that we can do this one step at a time, but probably it needs to go up.
Mr. Mayor?
Walter?
Clarification from the maker of the motion. Gary's comments regarding fee structure included an October 1 fee change resolution. Would I be presumptive to presume that your meaning, go to 155 as soon as staff can do it and not wait till October 1?
That would be my intent, yes. Increase the permits now, and we'll deal with the fee resolution later, but with the recommendation, we'll leave it where it is.
Second, that's a different part of the story. The motion raised to raise it to 155 right now.
Yep.
Yep.
Everybody clear on that?
I agree with that.
Okay, John, I'll start with you.
Aye.
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 Okay, so, we got six for, so we are going to raise the parking permits to 155. We will move on to item number 10, thank you, Les, which is Palouse Knowledge Corridor Boot Camp sponsor request. Gary, read it.
Please, Your Honor, we have a request from Councilmember Wayne Kraus, who is a board member of Palouse Knowledge Corridor. They are coming up on their second annual entrepreneurial boot camp, and the request is to fund two scholarships for attendees to that boot camp. Review the brochure. The brochure from Palouse Knowledge Corridor is that the cost of those scholarships is $2,500 each. This was presented to Administrative Committee. Administrative Committee recommended that they were in consensus that council should fund this out of non-prioritized projects, which has a current balance of approximately $7,700 in it. So, that would take that, there's plenty of capacity within that line item to pay for that.
Dan?
So, one of the things, as this came up, we felt, a person that wants to go to the boot camp, how much was that, Wayne? Was it $2,000 bucks or was it $1,500?
$1,500 is tuition cost.
And I've been looking at, you know, we have the scholarship, which is a sponsorship level, you know, much like different levels of vandal boosters or whatever, bear boosters, whatever it is, and there are, you know, items in this that, you know, we're obviously already PKC members. I would imagine we're already recognized on event signings, but there's, you know, things, company links that would be more towards a business than a municipality, it seems to me that, you know, I don't know if we need to work with the PKC as far as, hey, we'll sponsor some folks, but, you know, here's the actual dollars to let those folks in, rather than, you know, I don't know that we need as much promotion in, you know, promotional materials in everybody's goodie bag. So, you know, that's just my two cents on that.
So, you-
I would, I would, I'm okay with sending two folks there, but do we do it at-
$1,500 bucks or $25,000?
Right.
That's okay.
Wayne?
Well, I think the whole council agrees that this is definitely a good thing for people to go to. It's an economic impact item. And I want you to be aware that the tuition costs for the number, whether it be 20 or 25 campers or folks that go to this, does not cover the cost of running this boot camp. Boot camp has a little over $100,000 budget involved in it, to pay for instructors, mentors, meals for those folks. And so, that's the purpose, as you guys have seen this, the sheet, as to the different sponsorship levels. And it is a sponsorship, they call it a scholarship of $2,500, but it's to help the PKC meet the costs of actually putting this on, the transportation costs, the lodging costs for the mentors and the instructors. So, to have, to expect the folks that are actually participating on the participant level to be able to fund this entire thing is not realistic. While there is a major sponsor involved in this that is substantially donating a lot of time and money involved in this, the PKC still needs the sponsorship level from the different businesses as well as government entities. And so, this would be our sponsorship of $5,000, which would be showing the faith in what be the entrepreneur boot camp is all about, getting beginning-level businesses off the ground, teaching these folks what it takes to become an entrepreneur and be successful in their endeavors. So, I would encourage the council to go ahead and fund it at the full $5,000 level. I'm not going to go into how some of our sister government agencies are doing this, but I will tell you that there are, we have some of our other government agencies that are funding it at a much higher level than the $5,000.
John?
I agree with Dan. I don't know that it's the function of this body to support, other than the scholarship level. We turned down a bid for the tennis courts, although that was a $200,000 turn down instead of a $2,000 turn down. We just refused or chose not to take care of the raising of the parking permits, although we did increase the number. And so, if we're going to do those two things, I think we should probably stay the course and put the amount at $3,000 instead of $5,000. I can support that.
Another, I guess, to clarify, we're already tossing $2,000 bucks at the PKC, right? So, if we did another three, then we would be at that two-person level, and we would be getting our year-long membership in the thing covered. So, I mean, we're already 2,000 of the good with them, in my opinion, so here's another three, and we could say that's for two scholarships, and it gives us the, what we already get, you know?
Art, you had a question.
I was going to say that the PKC is an entity that's encouraging economic development here on the Palouse, and as such, I think we should be considering what we can do to help raise and keep people who might be entrepreneurs, starting companies here on the Palouse here at home, and providing them some of the tools to do so is part and parcel of what the Palouse Knowledge Corridor does. And yeah, it is giving some extra money, but these events do cost a pretty good chunk of change to put on. But I think the intangibles that could possibly, there's the word again, John, but that could be reaped potentially from keeping these people here is worth the extra money, and showing that Moscow is serious about fostering economic growth and maintaining companies in town, to me, makes it worth the funding of the scholarships at $2,500 each in addition to the 2,000 we already put in.
Walter?
Thank you, Mayor. I sat on the PKC board for a couple of years before Wayne, and I remember discussions with administration and other elected officials about funding PKC at all. We consistently have done it. Gary, do you and Don remember what our previous year's amounts in the budget to PKC were? Were we not at 5,000 at one time? Or am I wrong? And I didn't give you a heads up, I just thought of that.
I can tell you, in the last four years, it's been 2,000, but-
Okay.
I can't remember if it was-
Did we ever get to five?
Are they that old?
Yeah, they've been around six, seven years. It's actually just after, I'll bet it's eight years now. But Walter, I believe that you may be correct, in the first year or so, it may have been $5,000.
And the points that have been made about what they sell these attendances for and the scholarship being two different numbers, the council just needs to realize that what you're talking about is what's already been said, which is, whatever amount you agree upon, you're going to add 2,000 to it, and that's what this council is contributing to the PKC. A totally different question for Gary, if I may?
Go ahead.
What is happening with Jeff Jones's salary and the budget?
It is not being expended, it's being retained in the general fund.
If this, as Art says, is economic development, could the funding of this come from that and not out of legislative reserve?
Well, certainly, you could direct that it be paid-
Again, I didn't give you a warning, I just, I just thought of it.
And so, Don doesn't hit me in the back of the head with his budget book. We can certainly, council can direct that we pay for it in professional services. If it overruns that line item, there is savings in personnel. So, certainly, the council can do that. We will just reallocate funding, but you don't, you wouldn't pay for this out of a personnel line item. So, but there is capacity in the budget.
There's been some question that I've heard from council members about taking the legislative reserve down to hardly anything. So, that was just a reason for thinking of a different way to fund it.
Dan?
Yeah, that was going to be my point, is, you know, I wanted everybody up here to remember that, you know, I'll go ahead and approve it if that's what the council wants to do. You know, I've twisted, you know, got Wayne to pull the rest of his hairs out over this thing for the past several weeks, just out of honor in this mostly, but basically, I want everybody to think about the fact that, you know, if we do approve it, we are down to about $2,000 in our legislative fund, so, you know, we still got half of a fiscal year left, or, well, not quite, but almost. But so, you know, all out of the will.
Mayor?
Jim had a point, let's let Jim talk here.
I just noticed when I read the citizen survey that came out this week, that the number-one thing, number-one priority thing was growth. And it seems to me, if we're going to, you know, try to foster growth and economic development in this town, then this is something that we could do to try and retain talent that's in the area, and it's not very expensive. And, you know, we talk about bringing down this legislative reserve fund, $2,000 versus $4,000, it's a pretty small amount of money in terms of the entire budget of the city. So, I think, I think it's worth taking a chance on the $5,000 level here, and I think we need to closely monitor what happens to the people that we sponsor in this, and what does it do for our economic development? And if we don't get a return on the investment, we should probably decline to do it again. But I think it's worth taking a chance on this time.
Are you putting that in the motion, Jim?
I can put that, you want me to put that in the form of a motion?
Yes, I sure will.
I would move that we sponsor two scholarships at the $2,500 level for the Palouse Knowledge Corridor for this year.
Second.
Okay. I think everybody understands the motion, and I will, you guys-
Couple of comments that I want to make, though. First of all, I want everybody to understand that we are not, with this scholarship, we are not funding anybody in specific, okay? This money would go to the PKC, and it'll be utilized to fund scholarships, fund bootcampers that go there. So, but I don't think it's within our purview to say that we're going to sponsor this particular person or this particular person.
No, someone will get sponsored, and we'll be able to keep track of who those people were.
Absolutely, we will.
And whether they build a business here or whether they move to Houston, Texas, that's-
Well, and then, you know, and then the other comments are about our legislative fund that we're utilizing our discretionary funds. And, you know, we spent $7,000 out of that to fund an engineering study for bicycle tunnel.
For what?
Not that I'm saying wasn't worthwhile.
Oh.
Okay? But we also spent $10,000 that staff came to us, and what was it, I don't even remember what that $10,000 went to, what was it? Gary, do you remember?
Given enough time, I would.
Yeah, me too. So, it's like, that money in the legislative fund for the council, to me, is what council members themselves think should be a really good thing to spend money on, okay? And I, and thank you for Jim's motion on that, think that these scholarships are an important thing to help PKC pull off this boot camp. You know, the city talks about economic development, we fund CETA, fund LDC.
Wayne, I think everybody's got that.
I don't know, I don't know.
I think I can start, well, I think I can start with Walter. Find out here, Walter, you want to start it?
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing down here.
Well, we've got a motion to approve $5,000 for these two scholarships for PKC.
$5,000.
$5,000 total out of the legislative funds. Motion made by Jim, seconded by Wayne, you will start the vote.
I guess Wayne was through.
I guess so.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
See? What did I tell you, Wayne? Six to nothing, you got it.
You knew it was unanimous before I did, I didn't know that.
Well, I think everybody got the idea, what you're, I think we hammered it enough. Let's move on to item 11, Ordinance Amending Mayor's City Council Salaries Effective January 1st, 2016. Gary, you've got the floor.
If you have any unscheduled questions, I'd be happy to answer them now. Okay, this is, comes around every two years, and this is pursuant to Idaho code as well as our own city ordinance. Councils, the way that the law is set up is councils are essentially prohibited from voting on their own pay raises. So, any, but there's a recognition that council and mayor's elected official salaries need to be adjusted at some point. So, the code requires that, or at least directs, that if the council is going to adjust salaries, that it has to do so within one-
that it has to do so within one year, and it will not take effect until January 1st of the following year. It's every other year when we have our municipal elections, so potentially at that time, there could be three new council members, three new council members and a mayor, depending on the four-year cycle. So that's what it's for. That's the directive of the code. Our ordinance indicates that the amount of adjustment will minimally be the amount of the cost-of-living adjustments or consumer price index adjustments that are granted to city staff. Those two in the past two years. Fortunately, the economy is, it's rebounding, the CPI has been minimal, 1.5% in calendar year 2013, and 1.6% in 2014, for a total of 3.1%. The ordinance that you see in your packet has those amounts, and it's in legislative form, you can see what the current authorization, approved authorization is and what it would be in the future. Some council members have approached me and indicated, you know, are you forced to do this? No, you're not. However, it is very easy to get out of sync with the, not that council salaries and the mayor's salaries are sufficient to feed a family, they're intended to help offset the costs of the inconvenience that you have for being on council. It's certainly, I've never had a council member run for council ever confide in me that they were doing it for the money. However, this is, typically councils have approved the statutory change and have, it is their personal decision whether they desire to take the increase or not. So that's up to the council members and the finance director personally. However, the ordinance is there before you, and it needs to be adjusted if council's going to do so, not to take place or become effective until January 1st.
Dan?
We saw this at the administrative committee, and I can remember when I was first elected to council and this coming before us, and, you know, we were, had a pretty big turnover, I think, that time, and we're like, well, why would we want to do this? And I look at it now as, you know, like Gary said, the code says, we don't vote on our wages. I look at it as we're voting on the salary of the next council, basically. And that's how, because it's an every-two-year thing, and, you know, I know several people up here probably haven't taken the raise, and, you know, that's a personal thing, and, you know, everybody can do as they wish. I did want to ask in the wheres, those are, the second and the third wheres show the current, well, it's a, it's kind of an in-between rate, because in your legislative portion, we've got the current rate at mayor, 1890-18, and then the new effective rate at 1948-78, and then the first wheres, it's at 1947. And then there's a similar difference in the, between the next, they're falling in-between the two.
I would, I think what we did was apply half of the amount, so I would ask the council to amend that by interlineation to reflect the legislative changes down below. The recitals will be changed to reflect those two amounts, yes.
Legislative changes?
Yeah.
I did check the math on the numbers below, and they correspond with the percentages.
The numbers below are the proper numbers?
Yeah. In my math, I did not catch up above what you're talking about.
Right. And I noticed it last time, but I didn't think to bring it up because I didn't see the legislative part, but I wanted to make sure that we all saw that.
I think what that was, folks, is it was 1.5 the first year, and 1.2 the second year, and it was accumulative. That's how I...
Right. Apologize for that, thanks for catching that.
So with that, I would make a motion that we approve the ordinance to make salary adjustments for the mayor and council effective January 1st, 2016, under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and be read by title and published by summary.
Do you wish to add as amended?
As amended, yes.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion by Dan, a second by John, to approve the ordinance making the salary adjustment for mayor and city council effective January 1, 2016, under the suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings that be read by title and published by summary, and go with the bottom figure on under section 8-2. Don, I'll start the roll with you.
Aye.
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 Okay. Oh, I guess I better read this ordinance, 2015-08, is that correct? Okay, ordinance, 2015-08, an ordinance amending Title I, Chapter 8, in the Moscow City Code, providing for the increases in the salaries of city officers, providing that those provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable, and providing for the ordinance to be in full force and effect from the date of its passage, approval, and publication according to law. Okay, with that, I will move on to reports. Dan, admin.
We pretty much covered everything on admin. The other thing was the Farmers Market Promotion Program grant application that we approved in the consent agenda, and basically, it's the stuff that they've been doing, all the side work with, and we're open to get that funded again through the USDA here in 2015. On the 22nd, we had, I attended with a few others in here, the URA presentation regarding the best uses of the, what's going to, the absorption study, yes. Now, I'll let, you know, one of our lustrous URA members expand on that if they'd like. On the 23rd, I attended the chili cook-off, and I think I've done it almost every year since I've been in here, and, you know, as much as it pains me the next day, it's still a good, fun event, and who won this year, Wayne?
Amanda.
Amanda won this year.
Amanda won.
Well, the trophy had to travel a couple feet upstairs, then. And then on the 24th, actually on the 23rd, I did attend the Parks and Rec Commission meeting, and, you know, there was a lot of other, their regular facilities reports, they're talking about the designs of the parks, you know, we have a lot of parks that aren't improved yet, so there's a lot of that going into the master plan. One of our lustrous attendees here is probably excited about the Otteness Park grand opening in the near future, and they're still talking about the pool repairs that are going on, because that's going to be opening up here in about another month, so. And then on the 24th, in the mayor's stead, I attended the Arbor Day presentation over by the Public Library with the Tree Commission and Russell School 5th graders, and that was a good time, as always, and we got probably our, I think it's our 536th Annual Tree City USA Award, and I think we're the, you know, there's six cities that have had a couple more than us, but, you know, maybe it's less than 500 years, I can't remember, but we've been doing it for a long time. I did get a hat out of it, so that was cool. On the 26th, as Chief Nickerson mentioned, I did attend the firefighter 1 and 2 graduation there at Fire Station 2, and, you know, I'll give it up to Chief Nickerson. You know, we have had these classes in the past, but he's trying to bring it up to this academy level that I think really shows how, you know, we've always talked, you know, even Chief Button talked about how we were, he thought education was one of our big things that we wanted to be a part of with our resident program and with the fact that we're here with the university, and I think that Chief Nickerson is just amping that up another level here a little bit with the academy idea. So that's going to be fun to see how that goes in the future, and I look forward to that with Chief Nickerson's leadership.
Art, yeah, I had a couple of items. Couple weeks ago was a Sustainable Environment Commission meeting, and reviewed once again the water conservation plan that'll be coming before us in the not-too-distant future with some proposals on how to better conserve water and try to not exceed the P-BAC limits too excessively in the near future. Also talked about the Sustainable Business Survey that was undertaken with businesses on how to become more sustainable and cost-effective. Didn't go so well, so the commission decided to drop that for the moment, and just...
Didn't go so well?
Didn't go so well.
Can you explain?
They sent out 420 surveys, and 49 were returned, which was less than the statistically significant requirement of 100-return surveys. So really, what they're going to do is just go forth with newsletters on how to better conserve resources, how to recycle more cardboard, things like that. Let's see, worked on a little bit of the budget request for next year, and there's Cycling Savvy coming up, which is put on by the Bike Collective, June 12th and 13th, on how to bike safely in automotive traffic. So that could be kind of interesting. Last week, as Dan indicated, we had a review of the absorption study that was done as part of the URA, and Gary can fill in all the blank bits that I'm going to leave open for him. But the upshot was, what kind of businesses are going to have the best chance for economic success in the urban renewal agency area, specifically Legacy Crossing? And the upshot was that mixed uses along the more-trafficked, either pedestrian or automotive corridors would be best, businesses on the first couple floors, residences above, and the residences above should be in sort of an urban residential fashion that seems to be the model that younger people are moving toward at a pretty fair clip. And so, a rather lengthy study makes for a really interesting reading. Other than that, other meetings come up. Thursday is for affordable housing, for anybody who wants to show up for that one over at the Mann Building.
Okay, Walter, welcome back.
And I don't have any reports because I'm gone, but I'll jump the gun with Gary and remind you that at 7:00 AM on Wednesday, we have the monthly breakfast at the quiet room at the Wallace complex.
Okay. Wayne?
Everything on public works and finance was covered, either in the consent agenda or the regular agenda. On 21st of April, I attended, of course, Smart Transit's monthly meeting, and it's interesting, the computer software program that they utilize for bus scheduling is called Route Match, and there's been ongoing issues for a number of years with it, and the entire amount has never been paid off. The board was a little bit concerned about, there's about $14,000 hanging out there that we haven't paid, and getting some kind of a resolution. So we directed Jenny to contact Idaho Department of Transportation and get their recommendation on it, and they're still recommending that, you know, the other entities, the other transit providers have not signed off on it, so they're recommending that we don't sign off on it either. So it's still sitting out there as a liability, but we haven't paid for it. Part of the 5311 funds that we get is our administrative funds. We had some administrative funds that are left over this year, and so actually, Smart Transit's going to be buying some bus shelters, so we'll be able to put some more of those up. I know the city's buying some, and we're hoping that, Smart Transit's hoping that the bus shelters that they buy, that the city will just kind of store them in a safe place, and so if we get an extended route, then we'll have some bus shelter to put up. And I can see that's not going to work.
Okay. And so... Charge your rent.
Yeah, really. Okay, and then moving up to the 23rd was Historical Preservation Commission, and they've started their discussion again this year for the Preservation Moscow Newsletter. Items of interest would be the upcoming conference being held this September in Moscow, that's the state historical conference, and the information on the reformation of the Fort Russell Historic District. This is becoming quite an ongoing process, and part of the problem has been that the consultants that they hired to do that are using some guidelines as far as what houses in the Fort Russell District would actually get on the register or should, or, and the commission, and there's a lot of experience on our Moscow Historical Preservation Commission, and they have some disagreements with them, and they pretty well know where the feds stand on these type of things. As an example, say that you grew up in a home, we'll just use Gary as an example, you grew up in a home that was built in 1930, and then you went back today, you looked at it, if you could recognize that as the home that you'd actually, yep, that was my house, that was my home, you could probably qualify. Just because you've put in quality windows doesn't necessarily mean that it would not qualify. So there's some discussions, but they're doing a good job on it. And, yeah, I attended the chili feed with Dan and John, and Amanda did win, she's going to have to go against the county again this year, and Michelle won last year, so we'll hope that Amanda can pull it off, we can get the trophy back here. And that's what I've got.
Jim?
I was not in the United States for the last little bit of time, so I don't really, didn't really attend any meetings, but the crux of the Clear Water Resources and Development Council's business was a new executive director's been installed, Renee Hill started two weeks ago on the 20th, and things are going along quite well, the weed management programs and the Youth Conservation Corps programs are proceeding as they had already been set up, so that's good.
John?
Went to the Human Rights Commission meeting, and the Humans Rights Commission is going to be at the Farmers Market one day in June, one day in September. What day that's going to be in either one of those months has not been firmed up yet. Another thing they dealt with was, a letter was presented to Gary and the mayor, and it's a South Dakota support letter, and as soon as that comes back from the mayor and/or Gary, it will or will not be sent to just support a group of young people that were insulted and embarrassed by another group in South Dakota. And then the Social Justice Forum, Lessons From Ferguson, The Conversation Continues, and there was a very, very small number in attendance, in fact, just one, and so the...
At the Social Justice Forum?
Yep.
One person attended?
One person. However, there are any number of other things going on since Ferguson that are probably a little bit more timely, that may have had something to do with it. The Finding in the Center Conference is going to be back at University on Saturday, October 17th, at the U of I, and a full day of activities is planned, and then, I think, quite important is the Menon Sheik Award is going to be presented on November 5th. And Menon Sheik was, as you well know, a very positive person in our town for a number of years.
Longtime member of the Human Rights Commission.
And then, had the Planning and Zoning on April 22nd, and we dealt with, or they dealt with the Prospect Place Edition PUD and Preliminary PAT, that's passed unanimously, and recommend the addition to the council, so that will be coming to this body. And then the Legacy Crossing Design Guidelines for Off-Street Parking and Window Opening Requirements, and the next, that's going to be put on a public hearing at P&amp;Z. Also, a public hearing at P&amp;Z is going to be the Outdoor Seating in Commercial Zones Draft Ordinance Review, and both of those things will be coming, I think, on May 13th. And other than that, I have nothing.
Okay. April 24th, there was District 2 AIC meeting here in Moscow at the Best Western, a lot of great information, it was an all-day meeting, had a number of people from other cities, Belaflores, Troy, Cottonwood, so Lewiston, so from all over, it was a good meeting, covered a number of different topics. And then on the 26th, as Dan had stated, they had the Fire Station 2, we had firefighter 1 and firefighter 2 classifications, 18 graduates, so that was very nice, and that was the first class that they've done this, and as Dan said, Chief Nickerson is trying to elevate the level of safety and training, and I think it's absolutely terrific for our volunteers and for our town, it's a big deal. And then on April 29th, I had an Airport Board meeting, and Airport Board is looking at accumulating lands for the realignment. With that, Gary, I'll turn it over to you.
With that, Gary, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. I just returned from some leadership training in Gettysburg, Pennsylvania. Want to thank the council for the opportunity to attend that. I try to go about every five or six years, and it's been a little longer than that since my last one, but it was a really good program, and hopefully be able to bring some of those lessons here. Tomorrow, I'll be speaking to the Center for Creative Land Recycling Conference in Lewiston, attended by a lot of local government folks regarding funding of brownfield sites and assessments and those sorts of things. I will be presenting urban renewal as a method for consideration of funding public improvements. We also, Elisa Anderson will be attending as well to talk about the Brownfields Assessment Grant, which was obtained by the city in the amount of $480,000 several years ago, and the cleanup grant, which was granted by the EPA to the URA for the site at Six and Jackson. So she's considered to be somewhat of an expert on the grants portion of that. Kyle Steele, our environmental specialist with the Water and Sewer Department, will also be attending as well. I would invite folks, if you have the opportunity, on Wednesday at 10 o'clock, we'll be having the Champs Awards in this room. So that is awards to individual staff members in several different categories. Also, we'll have the Service Awards for those employees who have had increments of five years of service with the city. Then, the main event of Public Service Recognition Week is Thursday at 11:30. We have our annual Public Service Recognition Week barbecue. It'll be at the Hurt. I will be flipping hamburgers and sausages, cooking for the benefit of the employees. So I'll rope a couple other department heads to help me out, but we would certainly love the opportunity to have the council come out as well, have a, break a little bread with the employees. I guarantee you the cuisine is nothing but upper crust, so, and I will cook to order, so love to see you there.
What's that date again?
That is Thursday at 11:30.
Thursday, 11:30.
This Thursday? You're talking about this Thursday, Gary?
This Thursday.
And when was the Champs Award?
That will be the 6th on Wednesday at 10 o'clock in this room.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is adjourned, 9:33, folks.